All right, good evening. Welcome to the December seventeenth, Mayor of the Nixa City Council. Call the meeting to order.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Matt Ogden.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Drellian Graham.
Here.
Zern Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if everyone has had a chance to review the consent agenda, if anyone would like to remove anything, please let me know at this time. Not, I will accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Ms. Graham, second by Mr. Vess. Roll call, please.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Drellian Graham.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
All right, and first up, we have our service reward. We have Frank Donahue with twenty years with the Nixa Police Department.
Mayor, Council. Officer Donahue has been an invaluable member of the Nixa Police Department for the past twenty years. He's dedicated his life to public safety. Before joining Nixa, he served with the NYPD, where he began his career in nineteen eighty-three, and retired in two thousand three after twenty years of service. In two thousand four, Officer Donahue continued his career and joined our police department, bringing his total numbers of, total number of years of service as a police officer to an impressive number of forty.
Wow.
Forty years in law enforcement. You don't see that very often. Even after four decades, Officer Donahue remains one of the best, has one of the best attitudes and most professional demeanors in the department. He treats everyone with respect, whether they are in the community or his fellow officers. He's known as friendly, good-natured, and is often the first to greet a rookie officer. On their first day, take a genuine interest in what they have to say in getting to know them. His warmth and respect has earned him affection and admiration in the city and in the community and with the people that he works with. He's often referred to, if you haven't heard this, the silver fox.
Oh, yeah.
He got quite a following after our lip sync challenge video. I think he might have had a secondary career there for a minute. Though Officer Donahue has never sought a supervisory role, his leadership is evident in the way he supports his peers. With extensive experience, he frequently assists fellow officers by providing guidance and helping with calls for service when needed. Officer Donahue embodies the core values of the Nixa Police Department: service, courage, integrity, pride, and professionalism. His continued dedication to the department and to the city of Nixa and the citizens has been invaluable, and we look forward to last, his lasting impact that he will continue to have on our community. So I'm not asking for twenty more years, but stick around for a little longer, Frank.
And Officer Donahue, if you would meet me over here by the backdrop, I'd love to give you something and get a picture. We are definitely very blessed to have people like Officer Donahue that do all the additional stuff in the community that kind of increases the respect for our police officers, so that's appreciate you more than you know, definitely. All right. Well, moving on to the visitor's section.
Whitney Giselle.
Mayor and Council, Merry Christmas. I just wanted to take a second to say that and give kind of a quick recap about where we're at, looking forward to twenty twenty-five, actually. The chamber has had a great year. We went and, well, I went with my kids in the freezing rain for the parade. I'm glad that still happened. Well done there, and the mayor's tree lighting was a wild success as well. I see stole one of the, somebody's suit from that experience. But we are looking forward to twenty twenty-five and continued partnership with the city. I see great things happening in twenty twenty-five. We're, we're starting off strong, stronger than we started off twenty twenty-four. I think people have settled into the transition that took place in the chamber, and I'm learning my role better, I think, and so we're really excited to see what, what, who we can welcome to our town. We've got new members joining the chamber every day. Obviously, those are people who have joined the city of Nixa as businesses and also outside of Nixa. So I just wanted to wish you guys a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we'll hit twenty twenty-five running. Thanks.
Thank you. And Whitney, I want to thank you for everything you've been doing. You've kind of changed the direction of the chamber and bringing in some things that weren't done before that really provide a lot of value to a lot of business owners and just anybody in the community, so really appreciate it. We do not have anyone else signed up, but if you would like to speak, you can do so at this time. All right, I will close the visitor's section. All right, next up, first reading Council Bill twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine.
First reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine. In ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa, amending chapter one seventeen, article seven, section one seventeen dash two seventy-seven of the Nixa City Code for the purpose of modifying provisions related to building height and building setbacks. Presenting is Planning and Development Director, Scott Godby.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Prior to a code change we did in twenty twenty-one, we had a table in our, our code about that kind of established a blanket building height of thirty-five feet across all zoning districts. As part of that code change, which was primarily related to increasing the side setback for single-family zoning districts from five to seven feet, there was some changes in the language. That table was deleted, and we actually ended up with no building height restrictions for commercial or in our industrial zoning districts right now. So we have taken it upon ourselves and with the Planning and Zoning Commission's insight really overhauled this building heights code section. So starting off, we're kind of just explaining and clarifying how we measure our building height, which is what this term, why this was in the, in the report. We're going off of what the, our adopted building code is, which is from grade plane to the average roof. So it'd be like halfway up your, your roof pitch. In the past, we've had different explanations either to the eve or even to the peak, so we're just simplifying it and going with what our adopted building codes have for building heights. We do have bulk plane already in our, in our code when it relates to M-one zoning districts, so we're just explaining exactly what bulk plane, the bulk plane idea is, which is essentially, if you draw a forty-five degree angle from the property line, that kind of, there's a good graphic right there. It kind of explains, it's, it equals like a one-to-one, so if your building height's twenty feet, your setback's going to be twenty feet from the, from the property line. So what we really addressed in here is, is kind of establishing that thirty-five foot as a normal building height within the city limits of Nixa to where if you're thirty-five feet or below, you can enjoy the, the normal adopted building setbacks that we currently have in our, in our, in our code. If you want to go above thirty-five feet, it really depends on if you're adjacent to single family and what your zoning district is as to what regulations we're going to have on you, so for typical single family, you can go above thirty-five feet, but it's going to require you to have a big enough lot in order to do that, because once you go above thirty-five feet, that's when the bulk plane will kick in, so you immediately lose that twenty-five foot and the twenty-foot rear setback, and you immediately go to whatever it is above thirty-five foot, so that's really the mechanism to, to keep those in place is, is the, the lot size. So if you have a big enough lot, you can potentially go taller. That will be the same for our R-four zoning district, which is typical for duplexes or patio homes, and then our R-five, which is our medium density multifamily. When it comes to our three high-density multifamily zoning district, we have an extra thing in there that if you are adjacent to single family or the R-four, which is again the two-family zoning district, you have an increase of one point five of your building height is what your setback will equal. So that again is only if you are thirty, if you are R-three zoning district and you're wanting to go above thirty-five foot, that is, you'll have an extra distance requirement you have to meet in order to do that. And it's not just R-one zoning district. We worded it in a way that would be for the land use. So that way you can incorporate property owners that are out in the county, because, you know, a lot of our expansion involves being adjacent to county properties, so we really wanted to keep them in, in mind when we were making these regulation changes, so we really tried to incorporate the land use rather than just the zoning. So again, the example for that is if you're in an R-three zoning district and you're adjacent to R-one or a single-family house. If you want to go forty feet, your building setback will be sixty feet from that property line. That's that one and a half thought there. When it comes to our commercial zoning districts, we really, the office, city center, and neighborhood commercial zoning districts, we really see those blending into kind of a residential environment, so again, they're usually smaller lots. So just the, the thirty-five foot max building height, but again, if you want to go over, if you have enough space, you can. You'll just be subject to that bulk plane regulations. And then the same thought we had with the multifamily, the high-density multifamily, we're going to incorporate that into the general commercial and the highway commercial zoning districts, which is again, thirty-five foot or less, you have the, the normal adopted setbacks, but if you're going above thirty-five feet and you're adjacent to single family or duplexes, you have that one point five. This was already, the bulk plane idea was already in our code when it related to M-one zoning districts or M-one and M-two zoning districts as it, if they were adjacent to single family, so we're not introducing the bulk plane idea. It was already there. We're just expanding it to other zoning districts. And it was pointed out to me that last paragraph is a mistake. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. That was left over from a different code change. But this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This was also discussed with them at numerous meetings throughout the past year. We also discussed this with the Nixa Fire Protection District. We also discussed it with the Ozark Fire Protection District. We also had conversations with our neighboring communities in Ozark and Republic. We also examined their codes to kind of see how they were handling a lot of this, this information or these issues. So we felt like what we are presenting to you is a good compromise for the city of Nixa. It's not a copy and paste from other municipalities or any other jurisdiction that we know of, so we're really trying to find what Nixa is comfortable with and also what our developers and builders have been asking for and really trying to achieve here in Nixa, so we're trying to to strike that good balance for the city of Nixa. So with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend unanimous approval for it, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
What are the max height that Nixa and Ozark are both comfortable with? The fire districts for Nixa and Ozark.
For Nixa, it was generally, talking to Chief Wallace, he spoke earlier off in the process about like fifty-five feet, and then it went to sixty feet, and then it really, after, I think he consulted with other fire protection districts and, you know, because as you go up in building height, you have a lot more requirements to build.
Suppression systems and stuff.
Yeah, you have fire suppression system. The code becomes a lot more restrict on what you're able to do there, so related to materials and, and strength and all this other stuff, so really it was just how tall one of his apparatuses could reach was his main concern. But again, if it goes to building height and they have sprinklers and all these other things in it, he's, it kind of reduces his concern, but I don't know about Republic, but they currently do not have, from what I can tell in their building code, they do not have a max building height. They just have a bulk plane idea. So again, that's, their fire protection district is working around that. And Ozark, as far as I can tell, also do not have a max building height, but again, it's, if you go above a certain amount of floors, it increases like your side setback and your rear setback, so again, there's, I don't believe there is a max building height in place in Ozark either.
Okay. Thank you.
I was thinking that when we had some talk about fifty-five feet before Chief Wallace said that was easy, I, for some reason, eighty-five feet stands in my, like, he could go up, his apparatus goes up to like eighty-five feet. I don't think we're ever going to go that high, but I think, but I think that's how high one of his apparatuses will go. I think. I could be wrong on that.
I don't recall that conversation, but I believe it.
Well, I know, I know he said that fifty-five feet wasn't a concern at all.
And again, it really, the, the lot size is really going to dictate a lot of this, so if you have a giant lot, you can go pretty tall, but if you, if you don't, you're going to be restricted. Any other questions?
I'd just like to say that I do like the bulk plane approach rather than some complicated formula.
So do I. Math is not my favorite, so. Thank you, Mr. Godby. All right, no other questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? Moving on, first reading Council Bill twenty twenty-four dash forty.
First reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-four dash forty. An ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a wireline pole attachment agreement with Total High Speed LLC. Presenting is Assistant Public Works Director, Travis Cossey.
Goodness, you're tall. Mayor and Council, Total High Speed recently approached the city with a request to enter into a pole attachment agreement for the consideration to allow their infrastructure be, to be placed on our above-ground electric infrastructure. If you'll recall, in August of this year, council authorized a pole attachment agreement with Ozark Fiber. This was a template that we received from MPUA that we modified to meet the needs of Ozark Fiber and their desire to deploy fiber infrastructure within the city of Nixa. Utilizing that same contract, we provided that to Total High Speed. Remarkably, they did not request any edits to it, so for your consideration is a pole attachment agreement with Total High Speed that mirrors down to the letter the agreement that was authorized for the placement of fiber infrastructure for Ozark, Ozark Fiber. I think I said Ozark Electric, and I apologize. Ozark Fiber. I was, I was looking at Matt and it went straight to Ozark Electric. If you'll recall, also, the, the agreement provides several items that facilitate that installation, including the rate structure to be paid for attachment to the poles, the permit requirements that are necessary, any make-ready costs that are established as a result of their attachment to our poles will also be borne by the applicant as well as establishing inspection methodologies and, and permitting. As, as another reminder, the pole attachment agreement, this is, the fee for the attachment is established through the FCC formula that it can be updated annually, but at this point, it is set at eleven dollars and fourteen cents per attachment. So that is, that is the nuts and bolts of what the agreement is. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have specific to the agreement.
Any questions?
Do we have any concern with our infrastructure holding the additional weight or pull on the systems? I know we already did one, and we have another one that's kind of coming up, but you said they would be responsible for that, or?
Yes, yes. Great question, and as part of the application process, they'll be required to provide an engineered study for establishing every pole that they're wanting to attach to. They have to do an inspection of it and provide any make-ready requirements. That information is then provided to our engineer for verification that we either agree with it or we feel that they need to make additional upgrades if, if they are deemed necessary. So yes, each, each specific pole will be inspected and thoroughly to make sure that anything they're wanting, any improvements they're wanting to make is allowable on that pole or what improvements are needed to that pole to accommodate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Thank you, Mr. Cossey.
Thank you.
No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, go for it. And I will close the public hearing. Nothing else from council? All right, moving on, Council Bill twenty twenty-four dash forty-one.
First reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-four dash forty-one. An ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa authorizing the issuance of, of not to exceed fifteen million, three hundred thousand dollars principal amount of special obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-five, of the city of Nixa, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions by the city. Presenting is Finance Director, Jennifer Evans.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you will see, that was included in your packet is a pre-sale summary that was provided by our municipal advisor, which breaks down sort of this bond issue and, and the different steps and the different timeline for it. We will be going out for a public sale on January twenty-first, and it's basically opened up for bids, and whoever comes in with the lowest true interest cost is who we will award the, the bid to. Then we will receive the proceeds of the bond in February, and we can get started with the construction project. Sarah Granath from Gilmore and Bell is our bond counsel. She is here tonight if you had any very specific legally difficult questions that I don't know the answer to. She's your gal. So anything else I can answer for you, I'd be happy to. But yeah, that's, that's all I've got.
Any questions? Thank you. Hi, Sarah. Good to see you again. All right, if there's no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time. All right, I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? All right, moving on, second reading Council Bill twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven.
Second reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven. An ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa renewing the base lease agreement for real estate and existing facilities with the Bankent New York Mellon Trust Company, N.A., for refunding certificates of participation series twenty thirteen. Presenting is Finance Director, Jennifer Evans.
Again, this is our annual appropriation bond ordinance to appropriate the money and let the bondholders know that we have appropriated the money for this debt service. This matures next year, so this will be the last time we'll have to do this. But it's for the lift station that we took a loan out for a long time ago, so we're about, we're about ready to pay that off, so any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you, again. No other questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this. And I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? Anything else from staff? All right, nothing else. I will accept a motion.
So may.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Drellian Graham.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
All right, finally. Second reading Council Bill twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight.
Second reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight. An ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa adopting the twenty twenty-five operating capital budget for the city. Presenting is Finance Director, Jennifer Evans.
It's me again. Yes, this is the final reading of our twenty twenty-five budget, and it's been a fun time the last six months, just meeting and hashing out everything. I really appreciate all of your input and your participation and staff's hard work to put this together, and I think we have a, a really good budget to go into for next year, and so I appreciate all of the work that's gone into it. Um, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have that are, you know, you haven't had a chance to ask before.
That was a very nice way of saying you should not have any questions right now.
No, ask all the questions you want, just don't make any changes.
Any questions? Yeah. All right, thank you. Since there are no questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak, go for it. And I will close the public hearing. Um, I will say, um, I know this sounds exciting, but I do review a lot of the, um, financials from other municipalities and their budgets. And I will say ours is a lot easier to read. It's very clear and you guys do a very, very good job on making it to where the public can easily understand it. So thank you very much.
Good job, Jennifer.
All right, well, if there is nothing else, I will accept a motion.
So made.
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, a second by Mrs. Morris, roll call please.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Thank you all very much for all of your work on that. Moving on to the resolutions section, first up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, adopting the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine capital improvement program. Presenting is Finance Director Jennifer Evans.
Um, this is the five-year capital improvement plan that we are adopting. Um, it was, the public improvements were heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved in their November meeting. Um, and so the rest was approved and is in the budget for twenty twenty-five, um, capital improvement projects. And then for the years following, um, there are explanations and justifications in your packet for all of the projects that are, um, planned. So if you have any questions about specific projects, there's enough staff here that could probably answer that for you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this resolution, do so at this time. All right, I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? Or staff? I will accept a motion.
So made.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Ms. Graham. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixty, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, authorizing the destruction of certain records which have met retention.
This is my bill, so this is our annual ordinance or resolution that we do each year to destroy records that have met retention that is set by the state. We have about a hundred boxes this year, um, citywide that will be going. The police department has, I believe, three that will be going. And if approved tonight, the records will be destroyed early next year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on records retention or destruction, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Um, one question about this, um, is this something that in the future we could kind of expand on this and maybe offer up to the citizens to be able to come and destroy stuff as well? You guys are smiling like you talked about this before.
So Jennifer, our rep with Republic Services was actually here and that's who we're using this year. We, we typically go out, uh, he's a private company. We are, Jimmy and I are going to talk about it. We will probably open it up for citizens this year or next. Um, I, there are requirements for city records that have to be destroyed. I have to physically watch them go into the truck, I can't just let them take those. So we would have to close it down just for our records and then we would probably do some type of time slot program for the citizens to come in and have ten or fifteen minutes to bring their boxes, so we don't get rushed. But we are going to expedite that.
That's a great idea, awesome. Well, thank you guys.
That's a good idea.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Fair enough, I will accept a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
First by Mrs. Morris, a second by Mr. Vess. All in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose? Ayes have it, motion carries. Last resolution, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to solicit bids for construction services for repairs to a certain box culvert located under North Street. Presenting is Assistant Public Works Director Travis Cossey.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jeff does send his apologies, he was unable to make it tonight, but he did ask that I come up here and try to convince you to approve this resolution to authorize him to bid out a, uh, maintenance and improvement project for an existing box culvert. This is a culvert that is located on North Street, just to the east of Cheyenne Road, that is experiencing some erosion issues. Uh, specifically, we have some undermining that is happening underneath that box culvert. This bid would allow us to, or this resolution, sorry, would allow us to go out for bid to, uh, elicit the, the help of a contractor to come in and provide a tow wall as well as some, uh, grounded riprap and some other issues related to the actual soil around the box culvert itself, to try to stabilize it in the hopes that, and make an improvement in the hopes that we would be able to stop any future erosion at this area. So what, what Jeff is requesting tonight is authorization for the, him to go out to bid, to find a contract, perform the necessary repairs. And in his honor, I will click my pen.
John was doing the same thing.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the improvement.
Any questions? I actually saw a video yesterday of the flooding over there, so it is, it is definitely needed, so thank you.
Yes, yes, we do need some improvement over there for sure.
No questions.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Cossey. All right, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this matter, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council or staff? I will accept a motion.
So made.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Lucas. All in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Um, I wanted to send a huge thank you to Nixa Parks and Rec Department. Um, all their employees, full-time and part-time, that helped out, um, accommodating my crazy idea of pivoting at the last moment, um, to change the mayor's tree lighting and, meh, everything else. Um, it went over very well. Um, I, I know that was a very, very, very long weekend for all of you. Um, you did an event on Friday and two on Sunday. Um, that was, it, it was just, it was awesome. We had a lot of really, really good feedback. Um, even had Santa Claus on the news, talking good about Nixa, which was amazing. Um, he was by far my, my favorite Santa. He was awesome. Um, so I just, I can't thank you guys enough at all, it went really well. Um, I think all the kids that were there loved everything that was there, the, the hats, the crazy toys that should probably come with some sort of a, like, seizure warning or something because that was, those lights were hard to stare at. But, um, no, everyone that helped out with that inside City Hall and inside Nixa Parks, you guys are, are awesome. I think it went great. We could have, I could have really done without the rain during the parade. Um, but luck, luckily Officer Forgy jumped out of his car in the middle of it and brought me a police rain jacket, um, because I was drenched. That was my fault. It, um, I will take the blame on that one, but, no, I thought it went really well and I've heard a lot of really, really good feedback. So thank you guys so much. And putting up with my often crazy ideas and trying to figure them out. Um, anything else, um, from council? The last meeting of the year. Anything else from staff?
Just a couple of, uh, quick things. Uh, just a reminder, this Friday from noon to one is the employee Christmas lunch. So you are all invited to attend that. We will be shutting down most offices for the, the hour, so employees can, uh, attend that. So we'll be getting that message out to the public. Uh, there are a few still open, I think Parks has to stay open and the police department, but most offices will be shutting down for that hour. So, uh, again, extend the invitation for everyone, for all council and the mayor to attend that. And then, uh, just a couple of quick, uh, reminders, that offices will be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth and then also January first. That's all we got.
Where, where is the luncheon being held?
Um, I, it's a great question, I should have included that, it's a Public Works.
Eleven eleven.
So we're gonna have it eleven eleven at, uh, Public Works, I should have said that. So I just figured you'd drive around. Yeah, uh, bring a light jacket because it is out in the shop and it's only supposed to be thirty-seven that day, but we're gonna have some heaters going, so it'll be fine.
It'll be fine, he says.
It'll be fun, he says.
It'll be fine.
Yep. Anything else from anybody else? All right, well, thank you all very much for an amazing year. It's been a good one, two thousand twenty-five's gonna be great. Meeting adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.